It's seven o'clock, the call of any order. The location of the fire picture doorways on either end of the hallway face emergency. The A E D machine hangs on the wall directly across one door. And please silence all cell phone and paper. Please take your role call.
Carol Lotte.
Here.
Rocky Elsworth.
Here.
Mona Baz.
Here.
And Kate.
Here.
Jonathan Volker.
Here. This point in time, we will check them minutes of the previous meeting. Approval. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June sixteen twenty twenty five meeting. Vote to be by Rocky Elsworth, second by Carl Roth. To approve the minutes of June sixteen twenty twenty five, Mr. Van Coot, please hold a vote.
Carol Lotte.
Aye.
Rocky Elsworth.
Aye.
Mona Baz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
Jonathan Volker.
Aye. Okay. We'll move down to our public hearing. Would you please show approach of our public hearings?
The last is time. Get the page in the newspaper. And you're all on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we have set them, so hopefully they'll go through pretty good shape, I hope. Hey, at this point in time, we'll start out with Joe Montante. You would like to add one more shed to your property?
Yes, sir, you would.
Hey, would you like to tell the board what they want?
Yeah, for any secondary shed for guarding or whatnot. Oh, basically she shed. Behind your property.
If I write a right to keep your wife active? Now, this goes directly behind the pool.
Behind your pool approximately fifteen, sixteen feet, somewhere in there.
What type of shed would it be?
Right now, it's just like a barn type with windows. This is for the rehust effect, right, Bill?
Something like the Amish those?
Yeah, the Amish.
Correct.
Yeah, they build ninety percent of them.
They do extra work.
Okay. Any further questions on the board? At this point in time, open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please give your name and address. Yeah?
Oh, no, yes, I just have a question. On that fourth address. On your neighbor. Is there going to be any electrical? Anything electric to the next shed?
Will there be wiring to the shed or just the?
Just a shed?
No.
Because you share the same car and.
No electric.
Okay.
Okay, and anything else? Okay, anyone else? At this point in time, I consider this everything done. Okay. Number one. What if an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance? Okay, number two. What if benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some feasible method other than an area variance? Number three. What if the requested area variance is substantial? Pretty small shed. And the fourth. What if the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district?
No, I don't believe so.
Number five. What if the alleged difficulty was self-created with considerations to be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance?
They want the sheds or?
Yeah, that's a suggestion. Okay. I think this is a peaceful thing, I think will help them. We've changed our thinking over the last couple of years. We thought today's world, if you leave anything outside of your property but not in a shed by morning, that's probably wrong. This is just the fact of life now, twenty goals. Okay?
Make a motion. The application of Joe Montante in six Hillcrest Drive, the application to have more than one accessory structure on the property with town code five twenty dash thirty-one A states that one shed, one accessory, should not exceed two hundred fifty-six square feet. Only one will be allowed. This will be a variance, there should be a variance from that code to allow the second shed. We've gone through the five criteria. We addressed the question that was brought up in the public hearing. Step two secret.
Second. Vote to be by Eddie Haines, second by Rocky Elsworth to approve the area variance for Joe Montante's six Hillcrest Drive. For area variance needed for the having of a second structure. Vote please hold a vote.
Carol Lotte.
Aye.
Rocky Elsworth.
Aye.
Mona Baz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
Jonathan Volker.
Aye. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye. Have a good evening. Hey, Jeffrey Blair. Do you would like to put around your house?
Yes. If you let me.
In the front, right, and then like on the?
Like in the mouth, yes, on the weak side.
With the background attachment to existing pieces of area.
Right, we will count that piece concrete.
What kind of a structure would it be? What type of a structure? Wood?
It's wood, wood and composite.
Okay.
Composite decking and the pressure treated. It's where it's a piece of high sixes and then everything else will be two by tens come across.
Well, you're up there pretty high, you got plenty of room.
Hard.
I think it would be an asset for your home.
I, I, I believe it would be, Joe. It'd be nice to have, add reggers out there who wants the sunrise and wants the sunset.
Any further questions on the board? If not, open this up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please give your name and address. Public hearing. Number one. What an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance? Number two. What if benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by some feasible method other than an area variance? Number three. What if requested area variance is substantial? And the fourth. What if proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? Okay, number five. What if the alleged difficulty was self-created with considerations to be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance? The Q Q D S. Okay, any other questions?
I'll make a motion for the applicant Jeffrey Blair, seven eight six six neutral drive. Seeking relief from town code five hundred dash twenty-one C two C, which is a waterside setback three point thirty-five feet. This would be a twenty-one point seven five foot variance. Also seeking a variance from town code five twenty dash thirty-one A. Only one accessory structure allowing the S R zone, which there is a deck and a shed. Five criteria were read, no comments in the public hearing.
Second. Vote to be by Carl Roth, second by Eddie Haines. To approve the area variance for Jeffrey Blair, seven eight sixty-six neutral drive. For the added. Vote please hold a vote.
Carol Lotte.
Aye.
Rocky Elsworth.
Aye.
Mona Baz.
Aye.
And Kate. Jonathan Volker.
Aye. Carrie.
Good.
Okay. Good job, you got it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Douglas Glaub. Would you like to tell the board?
Uh, yeah.
Would you like to do?
Yeah, we're gonna build a ten foot by twelve foot shed. As we part, part four.
Well, you're going to be in the thick of it.
Apparently. Or now.
Just on the backside of that.
Yeah.
Any further? You don't even see it.
I mean, you can't really see much of anything else.
When we were there Saturday, you're back in, you're far back in. Any further questions from anybody in the board? No. None related to the variance, much land you own now?
Uh, now we have ninety-six acres.
Ninety-six?
Yes.
Okay.
We had it on from, uh, returns. We bought the twenty-three percent returns.
You can have lots of things.
Yeah, it's okay. Only that was a problem.
Okay, at this point in time, open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please give your name and address. At this point in time, don't give anybody, say anybody. Public hearing is closed. Number one. What an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance? Number two. What if benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by some feasible method other than an area variance? Number three. What if requested area variance is substantial? And the fourth. What if the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? Number five. What if the alleged difficulty was self-created with considerations to be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance?
He built all those other buildings.
I think with that many acres, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion, the application of Douglas Glaub at five twelve Walker Road, seeking a variance from town code five twenty dash thirty-one A. States that three accessory structures are allowed in the R R B L. The zoning board is asking to have four. We read the five criteria. There was no comment from the public hearing. Step two secret.
Second. Vote to be by Eddie Haines, second by Rocky Elsworth and Jonathan Volker. To grant the area variance, Douglas Glaub, five twelve Walker Road, for addition of a accessory building, which is a proposal, please hold a vote.
Carol Lotte.
Aye.
Rocky Elsworth.
Aye.
Mona Baz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
Jonathan Volker.
Aye. Carrie. Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yolanda Wilson. Do you like to tell the board what you'd like to do?
Like add another shed?
Aye. Okay. It's going to be no larger than sixteen, did you got a statue? Sixteen by sixteen?
Yes.
She didn't know the exact size, so she said it would be a larger than sixteen.
Will this be like, you know, like the Amish, like the wood constructed shed? Okay?
Where are you going to look for the shed?
Shed from over the pool.
The pools, down river?
This place also has a daycare business. We put daycare business on the property. And they will probably use the shed for some supplies and stores and my experience with that also. As I know, I guess.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. Any further questions from any board member? If not, at this point in time, open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please give your name and address. This is you. Being the one here in the one, I declare the public hearing closed. Number one, we go through the five criteria. What an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance? Number two. What if benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by some feasible method other than an area variance? Number three. What if the requested area variance is substantial? And the fourth. What if proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? Okay, number five. What if alleged difficulty was self-created with considerations to be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance? Okay. Any further questions? I think when you do these. That'd be done.
Make a motion to approve Yolanda Wilson, forty-eight Alder Bush Lane. For approval for a variance for a second shed. For town code five twenty dash thirty-one A states only one accessory structure is allowed in the R R zoning district. Shed will be larger than sixteen by sixteen. It's going to be roughly located in the area where there must be a pool. There's no comments in the public hearing. We're going to apply it right here. Type two secret.
Second. Vote to be by Jonathan Volker, second by Rocky Elsworth to approve the area variance for Yolanda Wilson, forty-eight Alder Bush Lane, for the addition of a shed. Vote please hold a vote.
Carol Lotte.
Aye.
Rocky Elsworth.
Aye.
Mona Baz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
Jonathan Volker.
Aye. Okay, you're all set with your shed. All right. You have a good evening, you too.
That's what I said, hello.
I sure will. Okay, we moved on, Marjorie Buckbit. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing okay, how are you?
Very fantastic.
I was like attached. And I would also like a set of stairs that come out of my sliding glass door. That is what I would like.
Yeah, we were there Saturday.
Yep, it's gonna be made out of the composite. Okay. The tracks, the tracks. Tracks.
Okay, I think it would be a real asset for you.
It's had a look.
The location is, doesn't bother the scenery, bothers nothing.
Nope, neighbors won't even see it. Yep.
Any further questions from any board member? If not, at this point in time, open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please give your name and address. We declare the public hearing closed. Okay, here we go again. Number one. What an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance? Number two. What if benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by some feasible method other than an area variance? Well, so you can do it. Number three. What if requested area variance is substantial? Number four. What if proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? Number five. What if alleged difficulty was self-created with considerations to be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals that shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance? Okay, board. Any further questions? There's none.
I make a motion that the application of Marjorie Buckbit, six four three zero Shore Acres Drive, seeking a variance from town code five twenty dash twelve, twenty-one C two C. The minimum, front waterside setback is thirty-five feet. She needs a twenty-three foot variance for the steps from the waterside yard to the existing sliding glass door. Also, a variance to add a twenty by sixteen deck would require ten foot nine inch variance. This is in the Shoreline Residential District. Talked about five different criteria, there was no comments.
Eddie Haines, second by Rocky Elsworth. To approve the area variance for Marjorie Buckbit, sixty-four thirty Shore Acres Drive, for variances needed to improve her home, which includes a front deck and some steps. Vote please hold a vote.
Carol Lotte. Rocky Elsworth.
Aye.
Mona Baz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
Jonathan Volker.
Aye.
Go ahead, John. Yes.
What am I gonna do?
The coastal erosion hazard area permit on that.
Yeah. We'll do that right now.
Okay.
Yeah. We do everything completely legal. Yeah, you're applying for the coastal erosion hazard area permit to do what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that what I did with the P E C?
There's no, I mean, there's no, um, public hearing where they comment on it. It's just our board looks at it.
Okay.
And says, yeah, it should, it should be granted. Grant you the permit.
Okay, great.
Any questions from the board? This is completely made to legal, that's what it does.
Okay, I don't have to do anything else with that then?
No, you don't.
Okay, okay.
Standing there, you're all right.
You're doing fine.
Okay, terrific, okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve coastal erosion hazard area permit for Marjorie Buckbit at sixty-four thirty Shore Acres Drive. So we had her stairs to the front sliding door and the deck off the garage and enclosure on front waterside warehouse. So zoning district, public rep, conservation board, documents are all conceded.
Second. Motion, uh, not in vain. Jonathan Volker. Second by Carl Roth to approve coastal erosion hazard area permit for Marjorie Buckbit, sixty-four thirty Shore Acres Drive. Vote please hold a vote.
Carol Lotte. Rocky Elsworth.
Aye.
Mona Baz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
Jonathan Volker.
Aye. Okay, now you're completely legal.
Thank you so much.
You're doing it. Good luck on your, it's been what you're trying to do.
Okay, great, thank you so much, have a great evening.
Okay. Joe Kalnanski and Loretta Rickenberg. Black platform. Yes, sir. Do you have the contract?
Yes. We have, we're already.
Would you like to tell the board what you would like to do?
Uh, so we're, uh, removing, um, an existing structure that I believe it was a boat house at one twenty and, um, moving the build a little bit larger garage for, also shooting parking.
Okay, now, how much wider is it?
Um, I believe it's, uh, about ten, twelve feet longer, maybe about six feet wider.
Twelve longer, how much wider? Ten foot wider, isn't it? What is?
Yeah, it was, I think it's twelve or fourteen foot right now wide. And I think it's twenty feet, so it would be sixteen foot longer and about, about five.
Forty-four by twenty-four.
Forty-four by twenty-four.
And then, um, right.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Cause the one existing is twenty-one feet high. It's just, we're grass, it's not.
It's twenty-one.
Yeah, but then you're varying to make.
But this one, I read, I looked at your drawings, it said feet.
Yeah.
From Brown Ditch.
Yeah, exactly. You had to lower the pitch of the roof to get that.
This will be probably still filled.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna do a trench footer. Uh, probably like three courses, three, four courses of block. And then, you know, I think it's eight foot six walls. And then the trusses, five, five, twelve foot trusses.
Okay. Is there any other questions on the board?
We're gonna get some sites up there, up there.
As.
It's pretty tied up there, so.
Yeah, all the houses are pretty close.
Just like, like living as they said.
Yeah, right.
Did you ever get any numbers to share? Did you ever get any numbers, the sheriff? Because in our last meeting, you were gonna get numbers because we talked about impervious surface and stuff like that, so did you ever get those numbers of hers, so we, we know what? Because if it's a the site setback is X, Y, Z, and you're looking for a variance, or we need to know that number.
Gotcha. I did go out and marked where the, the building was gonna be. I pulled the I pulled what, ten foot off the lot line from the side. We're almost level to where the building is, as far as that close to the water, so we're just gonna go towards the road and the expansion.
They wouldn't need eleven. So how close are you gonna be to the road, to the building?
Um, it's probably gonna be twenty something feet away, twenty-five feet away, I think, from the road. Or better? From the center of the road, right? Okay. Yeah, I think we were well, uh, well within that. Um, I did mark it out, I didn't measure exactly.
So sheriff, we do not, we don't have any hard numbers, too.
No.
We also need the impervious surface, we're gonna have to. Well, make it tough enough that you don't have any hard numbers, I can't we can't pass anything unless you know. We can't go and just say, well, maybe, or whatever, that's.
Right, I, I guess I just figured that's why I went marked out from building there. I guess I should have measured all those.
We just wanna make sure things are ordered.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
If there is any, if you do need site setback or whatever, we need to you know, where the lot line is, where it's gonna be, those kinds of things. So that she can post something in the paper to say that this is what the setbacks for this. I mean, every one of them lots down there has that, and we just try to do this now to bring the to bring it into compliance with the code. The code says this, and you're, you're getting a variance from it, it's documented.
Right.
Well, I would think at this point in time, we'll figure we have to go to the next one, or we can't, but we can't. You gotta have hard numbers, because when the lawyer looks at it, it's gotta be, I don't know, math, gotta be something. Okay, just guess at it. Make a whole public hearing tonight and keep it open till next month. Just get some opinion of what your neighbors think.
All right, so you want to measure it from the center of the road to the building and then from the neighbor's house, or which is pretty much the lot line, is on the neighbor's it's about like on their house, pretty much.
Yeah.
From what the, um, survey shows.
And then, the, the impervious surface. Yeah, calculate the impervious cer- surface so we know if you need a variance for that or not.
Okay.
Yeah, so check, make sure the water's not bad, and make sure there's the, let's say, that's clear.
And if you have any, I have insurance serving that, um, grows property, and I have insurance serving that, um, next year, it's a piece.
Well, I think at this point in time, I'll open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposal, please give your name and address. Not so far, so good. What? Okay, at this point in time, I'll keep the public hearing open until next month. And then, get, please get some figures.
Oh.
And then we can, uh, we can go. There's not that much we can do.
Gotcha, yeah, I guess I I just assumed marking out the building, that's what that was for, but I guess I shouldn't mention that.
When you mark it out, it just gives us an idea to see what it's gonna be, but we don't, we don't specifically know where lot lines and stuff like that.
Right, right.
When a lawyer gets a hold, you can't just guess.
Right, right, I get it. Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
And what does Eddie think next month? August?
August.
August, they think. And we need a lot to be open, yes.
I make a motion that the public hearing for Loretta Rickenberg and Joe Shalinski be held open until August eighteenth after seven P M. To get hard to pass numbers to know exactly what we need for a variance, for variances.
Okay, motion made by Eddie Hake. Second by Jonathan Volker, to keep the public hearing open till next month for Joe Kalinski and Loretta Rickenberg to come up with some hard numbers. Public hearing will remain open and will be further discussed at that point in time. Board, please pull the vote.
Carol Lotte, Rocky Ellsworth.
Hi.
Mona Baz.
Hi.
Eddie Hake.
Hi.
Jonathan Volker.
Hi.
Okay, I hope it I hope you're up thirty days, but legally, we can.
Yes, I agree, I understand.
And, and next month's agenda, soon, Cheryl will have to put the three up, you, someone.
Yes. Down there. Yeah, we put down, that'd be awesome.
Any questions? I think that's us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Forty wide? Way back here, something. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. What would you like to do, a forty by sixty?
I'd like to put up a forty by sixty pole barn, yeah.
This is, um, Brick Schoolhouse Road, where abouts is that, from East Ford or West Ford? Going east or west?
West, from West Ford. Almost almost eighty quarters to Trail, Trailford.
Oh, okay. Okay, being back in the next year, huh?
Next to the house, and I think there's, I think we figured there's ninety seven feet there.
Yes.
A lot line to the house.
Okay.
So it's gonna forty wide, sixty deep.
There are several vehicles down there now.
Yes, I have a big family, I got seven kids, and, uh, I have a dad, has a collecting land, like they call it classic terrace, but some people don't like to call it that. Like to put some of it indoors, so people don't see it. The driveway's just full of the kids. And my wife and myself, so.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Just now, we can schedule a public hearing.
How tall is this? How six and a quarter? Sixteen foot walls. So I think we're gonna say it's no higher than twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five, I think, twenty-one. From the ground to the peak.
It is twenty-five.
All right, so it's okay there.
Any other question?
This is ten feet long, long, five.
Sixteen foot high wall. Any further questions?
No, uh, don't need any setback, right? You said you measured it, you can put it in there without any interference.
All set, it really does have plenty of room. Pretty lucky.
Kobe Weiss, property at three nine eight seven Brick Schoolhouse Road. Seeking a variance from code five twenty dash fourteen A four A. It says only private garages and carports are stated in the code. He's looking to to add a forty foot, a sixty foot, with sixteen foot high walls. Pole barn on his property.
Motion made by Eddie Hake, second by Carol Rock, who is scheduling a public hearing. Kobe Weiss, thirty-nine eighty-seven Brick Schoolhouse Road, for the addition of a forty by sixty pole barn for August eighteenth after seven o'clock. Board, please pull the vote.
Carol Lotte,
Hi.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Hi.
Mona Baz.
Hi.
Eddie Hake.
Hi.
Jonathan Volker.
Hi.
Okay, have your money in prior to July twenty-ninth. What is the?
You can check cash or card.
Yeah.
So do I come to see you later on in the week?
Yeah, I'm off Friday, I can stop my friend.
Stop by, yes, there's kind of a problem.
On August sixteenth, that Saturday, sometime after ten thirty, we do on-site inspections.
Okay.
Could you, like, have cones or stakes?
Yeah, yeah.
So we have a field, a location.
Anything's smart.
Paint, orange paint.
Okay.
Anything'll work.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, sir. All right, thank you. See you next month.
Thank you.
John Udonna?
Yes.
Was I close?
Yes, very good, very good.
Do you like to tell the board what you would like to do?
Yes, I'd like to, I'll build a more than building, a steel building. Uh, thirty by forty-eight.
Thirty by forty-eight? Okay.
There's a garage, and this is now the contractor.
Oh, okay.
I guess.
Yeah, how'd you do?
So this is a a regular pole barn?
Good lawyer, yeah, garage.
Yeah.
I would take more to struck out there.
Post, pretty, you know, four gallons of ground, obviously, steel on top of it.
Sure. I don't think you'd go that, I believe I've looked at. Okay, I can see it, yeah, okay. And you'll be fine. Where, where on Route eighteen is that?
Just past, um, Redmond, like this house on, on Redmond, going west.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you're on the south side of the road.
On the north side.
North side, yes.
Just before the credit.
Actually, gotcha, I know where I see you, the
You're gonna be four foot off the front, the lane of the, of the Look, looking for four on one, a little bit more on the, on the back corners. Just to make sure.
It's going to need, um, it's one, eleven feet on one side, fifty fifteen feet.
Wait, you're eleven foot variance and
Yes.
And a ten.
Yes.
I can give him eleven, and then come into the pole barn.
Both, yeah.
Question asked earlier, the other guy, what's your height from the ground to the peak, right, Cheryl?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this, so you, you're, you're looking for uh, under twenty-five, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, this is on the four twelve inch, with a twelve foot lawn, so this would be under that.
You'll be okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and then it's to, to the socket, it's, uh, has a twelve foot lawn.
If it came to a point where you had to be a foot over, it would be a variance. You know, do the best you can to keep it at twenty-five, but understand building, that sometimes it's you might be a foot off or something.
Sir, sir, should we, should we ask for variance for a higher peak, just in case, for a, for a thing?
No, we're, we're good.
If you're good, okay, fine, sure.
Nice.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, just maybe, yes.
Nothing wrong with that. Site setback, so you're saying? Variance for for a nine agricultural storage building in that goal, in that zoning area, right?
Right. There will be eventually?
Any further questions? There's none, we'll schedule a public hearing.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing for John Udonna's thirty-eight eighty-six Roosevelt Highway, seeking to build a pole barn on property located at thirty-eight eighty-six town code five twenty dash fourteen A four A. States that private garages and carports are allowed, are allowed. Doesn't allow for nine agricultural storage buildings, this will be. And an eleven foot is it east, east side setback?
Yeah.
East side setback. And will you just put the code in there for that, Cheryl?
Yes, I will.
To be able to, August eighteenth after seven P M.
Motion made by Eddie Hake, second by Jonathan Volker, to scheduling public hearing for John Udonna, thirty-eight eighty-six Roosevelt Highway, for the construction of the thirty by forty-eight pole barn to his property. So, August eighteenth after seven o'clock. Board, please pull the vote.
Carol Lotte,
Hi.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Hi.
Mona Baz.
Hi.
Eddie Hake.
Hi.
Jonathan Volker.
Hi.
Okay, have your money in prior to July nineteenth.
If you send me five dollars in, yes, check with her.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, no, July nineteenth.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think August eighteenth, I would.
Yeah.
July twenty-ninth.
July twenty.
I read what it says. July twenty-ninth. Could, could you, um, do the same as we asked in the previous, um, have it staked or painted or something, so we can see the location? Well, that helps as a way of the public hearing, if someone has a question or something, we can view it.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with that. Just to clarify, the exact measurement I said, it's a eight point ten inches.
Very good.
Um, the other thing we wanted to cover is that our app, um, the, it says the thirty by forty-eight is twelve hundred square foot, it's actually fourteen forty.
Yes.
She was very nice to be able to help us get this thing filled out. Just wanted to clarify that.
And say.
Stretch the building to fourteen forty, and it's gonna be twelve hundred.
Any other questions?
No, good. That's pretty good, you guys. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want, I just want to say one, one thing. So, I, um, sent out one hundred and thirty-three dollars to this meeting. Eight of them returned to us, if you didn't give me a lot, and we really, we had one response.
One hundred and thirty-three.
As a happy neighbor.
That's it?
One response?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I love it.
You were so funny, I had to stay for the whole meeting. Because every time you looked out, anybody have a question, and you would look at me like, she gonna raise her hand again? What is she doing here? What's she doing here?
Fiona, with your public hearings the last, like, couple of years, people rarely come.
I thought it was very, um, interesting.
And they stayed the whole time.
Yeah, I thought it was rude to leave, to be honest with you. But I, I was enjoying it. And I enjoyed his, you, did you come to the house Saturday? And I, I was talking to you, okay, you said I was a happy neighbor, that's, yeah, and that did go over very well. I do have a question for you, but it has nothing to do with your post. Do I approach the, do I approach the vents?
You can do anything.
What, oh, yeah, did you get John's, um, medical packet, was it still in his file?
I did not find it in his file.
Okay.
Could you please, I'll, I'll send it to me.
And you get you, uh, to, to speak to the client.
I could take everybody one, I think, eleven.
That's so, yeah, so cute. Because you did, you said, you left me being, and I said, no, she's laughing at me. And you didn't stick up for me. I was, I said, what are you, what policy?
Trying to be professional.
Well, no, she's.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for telling me. Now, we're, we're all very professional.
I know, nine thousand people just watched me.